I have.
No, Rich. I am going to the four I can first, where you know, we can give an apartment line through I think it's terrific.
Mm hmm.
Um, Louis, this one has been probably shuttered quite a while, because. And they asked that they received funding or are about to receive funding out of which from uh state to help with that project that you guys over.
Mm hmm.
And I want to now be in that I have been told is the state, but it would take you a thousand dollars. And like all the reporting, you know, when you see me from Baldwin's housing, you know, you're seeing very little actual data. Uh, actual uh revenue, a little bit expensive, uh income statement, it has not been there to count in. They tax on for what? And so I think that the town, particularly if they're being questioned to give tax relief, it's time for the whole of the town trust to give probable recording to the town and to become very important in our handling of work. And then what I wanted to mention is that uh they are requesting seven hundred fifty thousand dollars from, et cetera, governments. The same application, as far as I can tell, because some of this information has not been made available. The same application was for the state in, I believe, twenty one before, and it was denied, same right. Uh, before the state and the federal government in twenty two, and the state denied it again. The same post. Uh, the federal government left the, if you will, review uh for later, so they approved and sent it to the town. Somehow the town, they were gone, and it went back to the federal government to be doing the record of the also the charter trust, which had been granted based, yeah, so. Pending the review going on now, this is my question. What has changed, alright, is the same application, how? Same amount of money for the same lot, which was denied by the state two times. Just how do you get the community to understand in their donation letter, their comment, that they just got to get this month? Because I do not know what has changed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. I don't have the answers to that, but if you, you have submitted a letter to date.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm so damaged.
We can address it in a bit.
Can you send me the comments so I can talk to you a minute?
I agree.
Thank you. Any other public comment, Laura?
I have a lot of concerns. I heard, and you know, I've worked in place when the false hotels and trusts are okay. But when they don't have the actual position, it's hard not to kind of remember. So I've heard from Boomer, they're receiving eight hundred thousand dollars for the minor prospect project, and that they're receiving seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for Whipper Road. And that's in excess of one point five million dollars. So I'm kind of trying to understand, people can't pay their property taxes, but I want to find out how to make something I received from Janie, because I really, you know, am trying to learn about it in the proud fashion. And she, this is what she wrote to me on July twenty fourth. The Boulder Containment Falseful Health and Trust government was mislaid during the transition to whom first selectment and is given a profit that may be updated in the past, was kept locked by and controlled by the let me fault. Since we are private non-profit, our documents may be viewed upon our roots to that from the first selectment. We are not an entity of the municipality. We will let you know when that folder is complete and available. That was July twenty four. Okay, so then I was also thinking, maybe if I were going to, like the tax documents, which you can find in the I R site. You can get some information there. Well, a couple of things there, but some were missing. And she wrote in a separate event about Vida, saying um all of the above. Uh, I have referred to the twenty twenty tax return, the twenty twenty two, the twenty twenty three tax returns. She said all in time will be available in the above mentioned folder, from the first of July twenty four. Now, these uh there for legal even buyer to be available. And I would really be disheartened to see the town grant any tax relief until they're qualified. Um, so I'm unharassed in uh support of minor street project. I think it's great, but I have great concerns about their financial management. I mean, just one small thing in some of the governments I haven't been in online is they spent two thousand seven hundred dollars on their damages a couple of years ago. And I'd like to be able to have a good conversations about what what's really going on with their money, you know, they have received lots of money. Um, and I can't think that kind of associated. I'm not sure.
Thank you, Laura. Any other public comments? Doug?
Actually, uh, I think you talked, I think the actual means of the rest of the footings. So are we to pull the comments on the following call? A tentative warning, selectmen's special meeting on April twenty one regarding uh the town of Kaden toward common procedures, which are attached. The voice my concern is Judy, they had a part of the measures in voting on the proposed parking plan and even potentially the firehouse if it comes up to that again. Uh, as a business owner, River Street, the interference isn't a major problem. That was my point. We discussed it. I think all the selectmen and myself agree, uh Judy's input and comments about projects are very valuable and are necessary and needed, but coming to the vote, if that's the case, uh in my opinion, uh I think Judy should probably refuse herself and move on. So I know this is all pending and it's all sort of going, and then when we do, we thought it found out, I guess we'll discuss it on someone. So it's a sort of a noodle, all of us can have a thing, but I think it's important that we go through these exercises and figure out stuff like this, just to maybe open a chance to add and to instill trust from the town. Everybody needs to feel comfortable with decisions made. So anyway, I think that just to get it in the record, thank you. And the code of procedures is attached if you want to talk to each other. Thank you.
Rachel?
Uh, please, I'm seeing you make a comment based off that, that we, David and I were not representing that maybe. But if you just want to make a point to that, many are no longer owners of that building on that street. Dave and I own that building, and you're also moving to Great Porter. This well, we just wanted to make that.
Greg?
Greg, well, um, I wanted to, not to get embarrassed, just wanted to uh see your point of view on job search since you're employing a handbook. Is that something that is been slated to be the work on?
I think that's in Dave's.
I think Dave, Dave's still working on that. Um, the last I heard, he was getting pretty close to uh having something to, to present.
And I brought up a, I think it's seven thousand reserve counts of a couple of times for the third command to just see if we can get that on the radar and then if we can get it on the radar or be, you know, generous of no.
It's attached to the treasurer's reports.
Oh.
Quarterly, is it, Michelle, they're not?
It was, so, so to be clear, and I didn't see that, so it's there, all right. But I was looking for what we had in its account to figure for. But then what we expect, what would be, when we were using it, and what possibly?
Some of that is.
No, I mean, you want to start, but I mean, I know the work names and saw that we need to do this, okay. Right.
We can't worry here, balancing, giving them the good tax, or
I think it's, it's on there, and I have the danger quarter rebounds, or I think the balance quarter, because it's why I was.
I'll take that with the object, I think, for.
Okay.
Michelle, uh, at the end of uh are the, are the added into those accounts?
Yep.
Um, at the beginning of the fiscal year, are they like immediate or after they get some revenue?
Basically, bringing it, it's sometimes, it's always depending on.
Okay. Janie?
Janie.
Janie had thirty two Main Street, calls those. I suppose I'm answering this, because you know, the Baltimore Chelson Trust. Uh, a lot was said in the earlier comments about our organization. Uh, so I would try to limit my answers to uh two minutes, and then if people have questions later to ask me, they're welcome to ask me. So there are some of what was said was disinformation, some of what was said was assumption. And first, I would like to say, no, no, no. They were not the same applications and they were not for the same grants. Number two, no. If you think you're the best volunteer in town and you do not get picked to be the one who was given a lot of votes at Memorial Day, that doesn't mean you're not a good volunteer. You're still a good volunteer. We were not rejected. It was that other others were chosen in those C D D grants that would have big hearings. And we were not a big town, we were not a big renovation, and we would not have opened up many, many units for residency during COVID. So that actually doesn't ask me anything to do. Second, about our awards of grants. No one to set it, I mean, you see that money yet? We have never said that. The actual eight hundred thousand dollars is accurate for the seventeen minor and twenty one uh suspect streets and buildings. The budget that we put in when we applied, as was explained at the time when we bought the uh minor and suspect street apartment buildings, that money, I'm sorry, that uh budget was put to the D O H, and they decided to grant us eight hundred thousand dollars because it not only pays for the rehabilitation of the five apartments, but it also pays for the acquisition of the property, which was four hundred and forty thousand. So you see less than half of it. Now, that question could have been asked in the spin. Uh, we are not a part of the municipality, we are a private organization, we write to our supporters. And uh that's where our newsletter, as it forensics, supporters who friends, what's when one. Uh, I think another one, if I use that right, I'm sorry, if I have that. It's the uh, the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, which was awarded through what is now called Community Project Fund Day, which is fund money, that's federal money, that is then administered by the D O H. That um money is for the infrastructure uh at phase, uh for Whipper Road, which uh I can explain Whipper, if anybody has questions about that. And that money has not been awarded yet, but it has been uh, it is uh in the process of going through bureaucratic, but we do not, we have not received either. None of this money has been released for our use, and when it is released for our use, it will be released as a drawdown that we invoice, we just invoice to the state, and then they pay us for the contractors to do it.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Steve?
Uh, I see in the actual meeting, I do want to speak to for uh goodness's sake, and she was, who said that I'm going to do that for a community. I did want to chip on the tree for the ball, for the gin, and see how the progress is, that was going. Um, but my main concern is, Steve, is a lot of us country, she honestly easily adding, or not, they have been the last few years added for a tax code. They're not, we added for a tax code this year, and that's a minimal about thirty thousand dollars out of here for the community. So I was a little nervous about after budget season and all the back and forth about wanting the community, where we were going to make up that shortfall. Um, I also wanted to suggest maybe going back to finger system that is so fine, you know, you got a figure for your call. Not like that. Um, and the new grant is comes out October first, it'd be great then, starting then in October and catch up and make that possible. Um, and you're part of that also is that maybe six dollars might not be enough. And we could add a, a dollar or two for the Wi-Fi for the uh the transportation, or even we have to do some further upkeep and maintenance, so we may want to address what those fees are and then how much it might maybe be in the future. Um, I do want to also mention the, um, the trees in town and the tree ward. It, it seemed that the tree ward didn't want us these assistance. Um, so I just wanted to know if there's a long term, short term plan for the trees in town? And whose responsibility is to get the responsibility, responsible entities, whether it's a power company, whether it's the state, um, to follow up on, on down trees, if it isn't, um, or on town property or part of the town responsibility. Um, I am on the Horse Free Commission's um agenda for Monday next week, so I will be asking them these questions as well, see if there are, you know, any involvement or any interest in the trees in the town. Um, and then last but not least, I did want to mention that, uh, I love that the horse selectmen to look at the trailer one these days in our town. Um, we as the um P N C don't really have much to do with the trailers, because it is a ordinance that you guys are supposed to take care of. So, um, I just wanted to see if there was any ideas, there, there is a trailer, um, now in the community, there was this setup and property was just developed for that trailer, so I just wanted to say that it might be something that we uh to address.
What do I need to go off the ordinance that's now?
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, I think that might be, it's in the reminder. She'll tell you more. Thank you.
Tim, did you want to respond to the tree warding? Part? I don't, I think that Dustin did speak with you.
I forgot, I was which part?
But uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but you do pick your assistant.
Yeah.
Okay. And you are the one who contacts every source and whoever for different trees.
If there's a tree down on the town road that is the wires, then that's what? You know, I, I can talk about that for a reason, well, I guess I'm not quite sure what.
Yeah, well, it was more based on, we have to have some sort of plan to be for uh future digging, level, make sure that the budget's for it and the border finance should be rare, the needing upside for what could be coming in, so I just think that maybe you could go more proactive than react, certainly a tree comes down, just cut it out in a different way, then we might need to address trees that will or could, or will be, be due to that.
Thank you.
There's a budget for uh taking trees down. I mean, that's if, I don't know, my budget, the town grad budget, or we call it, obviously. I will probably hear about it, so. Which hires the uh the bucket truck.
No, I know, and that's the nine thousands, and it is in the tree removal budget on our, our, or in the floor, in a kind of budget, but we also need to look at putting more money in that, because that's from now of your town crew road budget. You're using that one towards other things that your crew might need to be doing in town. So we may need to look at making the our crew budget a little higher, so you have a little more money in that.
I think it did.
We could make it, and that's, it's, 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 I think, you, you, another three thousand dollars, isn't it? Yeah, they weren't.
Tim, Tim, do you have, do you have, uh?
I, the six thousand dollars for a long time, it's up to nine.
Yeah. Do you have a contact with EverSource as far, do, do you use it frequently? I mean, if you identify a tree somewhere that looks like it, you know, it's over the wires, there, nothing we want to deal with.
Yeah.
Um, do you, do you put a lot of pressure on them to, some pressure at all? Sometimes I think that's what they need, you know, and they're out, they're out a lot, but maybe they're not out, they don't know they're not as intimate with uh the trees and the rest.
Or they're not going to come on right out and take that tree down, just for my studies.
Sure.
You're not a little.
Yeah.
And even some of the state roads, that may not be responsible, because it's a state road, I think.
Janie, that's a statement, that is a state issue, not our true. That was right.
Okay, any, uh, Hazel?
I think very much that, but it's still a fee, they're all in that.
We all. Oh, I didn't see it as a separate line, I believe, that, um, it's, it's all, it says six, we it, no, it's all. Yeah.
You think, anybody else?
I think.
Yeah, I have three quick things, and they're not in tax bill.
Take a tax to assessment and multiply by the mill rate, it's to the pen, there's no fee for um, best decision. I was, I would be charged, especially when I think this six is.
Yeah, I was, I had been involved, but you felt that distance, it was a main work, any issues of budget.
Yes.
Not this past, this year, this year, that's.
For, for being new, this should everybody be able, anyway, that wasn't, yeah. Okay, so I'm still concerned about the sound policies, because they haven't been up, the hand, the book hasn't been updated since two thousand sixteen. So we had all those policies made from two thousand sixteen to twenty twenty four, and they're nowhere to go. And border finance handle the policies. There aren't any, or one that goes back to you, George Elling, I can't even remember what it was, and the entire border finance policy handle. And then it's impossible for you, as selectman from the town, and the border finance to do the job, if we have zero policies for border finance and none in eight years before the second. So I, I don't know what's happening with that, but
you know, I have saved when you get spot.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Purse couldn't be here. She asked for the grant, uh, volunteer group, like the readers, do you mind to check? Okay. Um, at the desk. We have sent out several brands to our selectmen and committees, A R P, Berkshire Conic, Berkshire Conic Planning Tech, James Captain, touring artist, Connecticut Humanities, Historic Preservation Arts Program, Community Building, U S C A. And the cybersecurity grant was due in July nineteenth, have any of these grants been applied to our, to the party?
Uh, I believe that Dave did do that, some of it.
He was, yeah, that was due twenty eighth of July, I think.
Pretty sure he would be there.
Okay.
Have to ask him.
All righty. Any other public comment? Move on and uh to our approval of ten minutes. We have July eighth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes. August eighth, twenty twenty four, special meeting minutes. Uh, I will make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, uh, second.
Second.
Um, discussion, I, I do have on the July eighth uh, item two and three should be stated as uh that the Board of Selectmen would propose to the Board of Finance to do what the rest of each.
That was those.
One of them, yeah. We, we as the Board of Selectmen can't spend the money.
Right, go to the Board of Finance.
Yes.
Like that.
So I think the idea was that, just that it's wording, uh, the, the verbiage needs to be changed a little.
Would like it to say, um.
That, that we've the Board of Finance proposed to the Board of, to Board of Selectmen, proposing the Board of Finance to blah, blah, blah.
Recommend to the Board of Finance to recommend a town meeting appropriation of up to thirty thousand dollars for valid restoration proposal full attached.
Yeah.
For the purpose of repairing mile seven roof.
Correct.
And the Cardinal one?
Basically stated the same way.
So you make a motion to amend the minutes?
I make a motion to amend the minutes to read that.
So you've got a different motion on floor?
Okay, uh, right, so, uh.
With the drop, I make a motion to withdraw motion.
Check that.
Second by Chris, um, favorite.
Hi.
Hi. And now make a motion to accept the minutes. With Denise, can you read that? Don't you?
Yes.
Okay, let's start with July first, so you approving July eighth.
Yeah, he's talking about July, the.
August, July, you need.
In July, yeah, with that. So we're, first he makes a motion to amend the August eighth minutes, which states the Board of Selectmen of, made a motion to recommend to the Board of Finance to recommend a town meeting the appropriation of up to thirty thousand, I looked at it, it was twenty seven to fifty, wasn't it, thirty thousand?
Thirty, thirty thousand?
Yes.
For
For valid.
For valid inspiration with the purpose of repairing the roof at one oh seven Main Street. To come from capital reserve, top number one, seven, zero, two, sixty, zero, five, four, one.
I'll second that.
Alright.
Right. And then for the same with, uh, I'll make a motion to amend the minutes, number three, to say, uh, come, uh, proposal with, those are what you presented, it doesn't exist, proposal
recommended to rep, be recommended to the Board of Finance. To recommend to town meeting.
To recommend to town meeting. You second?
Second.
Um, favorite?
Hi. And uh to accept the rest of it, I know we accept the rest of it.
Okay, I second. Um, favorite?
Hi.
Now the, um, I mean, you, so I.
Oh, yeah, July is. And will we accept all?
Minutes.
That's it, so.
All's presented.
Second. Any discussion, I can get to approve, approve that.
Approve the minutes, yeah, yeah.
All favor?
Hi.
Okay. So minutes I got, treasure and tax collector, of course. You don't, you got all your copies.
There, if you were somewhere.
We'll start with the treasurer's report of May twenty twenty four, which is corrected from April to, say, May.
But, yeah. Forgot to page that, I'm sorry.
I did find it easier to read these since they're now quick books.
Uh, those ones are still, they're still hand written.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And, um, I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Second it, and I, uh, again, I would prefer to, uh, accept or receive the treasurer's report after the Board of Finance.
Okay, so you signed the votes, you said you may.
May.
Okay, so those are the tasks of the treasurer's report. The tax collectors' report of July twenty twenty four. I make a, a motion to accept that, did you, did you get that, received that?
Yeah, the record sheet left him on the table. I know it.
I, I would both, I, I'd like to make a motion that we table that, because I had a chance to review the, the tax collectors.
So we'll table treasurer's report.
Is that right?
I'll second.
Besides.
Communication. With uh, Project Sage. We had, uh, a thank you note from Project Sage, um, thanking us for our generous gift of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars received on July nineteenth. That was one of our special grants. We received. We received Susan B. Anthony. For the same type of thing. Thank you so much for your donation of one thousand four hundred. This contribution is helping survivors of sexual and domestic violence who come to Susan B. Anthony Project for help. Greenwood's, um. It was the same thing on behalf of Greenwood's Council and refers, we'd like to thank the town of Canaan for their generosity and support. Uh, for six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then we had the Falls Village Housing. Trust, I think I'm supposed to read that. You got the problem all that. Okay. So this was dear Dave, Judy and Chris from the Falls Village Housing Trust dated July twenty fifth. I am writing as president of the Falls Village Housing Trust to request your consideration of a decrease to property taxes on seventeen minor and twenty one Prospect Streets, otherwise known as the Falls Village Housing Trust Apartments. The new C T Public Act. Twenty four dash one forty three, section nine, taken effect October first, twenty twenty four, will require a change of valuation of our property. Due to the restricted income of affordable housing. We are therefore requesting a temporary decrease to fifty percent of our current property taxes. Falls Village Housing Trust has paid the first half of our taxes for the current year, but we are. In a low income phase due to the nature of rehabilitating the buildings. In order to make the repairs and renovations, certain units must remain temporarily vacant. The presence of environmental toxins, dust and noise raise safety concerns for our tenants, as I know you understand. The grant from the Connecticut Department of Housing, it covered most of the rehabilitation costs, but not the time, not the loss of income during the time. This time until the units are approved for residence. We appreciate that you are all supporters of affordable housing and have been open to hearing about our process of obtaining grants. Thank you for your consideration of this request, sincerely, Janine D. This President. Uh, I do know that we are in discussion with the assessors right now to see how we can go about. This how it all works out, so we should have some information for you, um. Sure. Um, any oral? Any other communication? Okay. We'll move on to the selectmen's report. So we had the appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an alternate. Which A, Eileen Cincella appointed August eighth, twenty twenty four, at a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. To a five-year term recommendation by P N Z. Um, B, the town of Canaan receiving DOT micro grant for bicycle pedestrian safety. Which was a five thousand dollar grant, working in conjunction with Lee H. Kellogg School, and we did receive that grant. So Dave is, um. Talking to Kellogg School now about setting up. The bike safety program. The transfer station I T cost from Frontier. We did receive. A letter from Frontier saying. To first selectman David Barger, pricing is either five hundred and ninety dollars a month for fifty M B S. Know what that's the conversion. Or eight ninety a month for one hundred M B S. So it's not cheap. We don't know what. That's first thing I said when I saw that. Why? It just is what absolutely did this. So Dave said he will look into it further. And, um. We'll let you know. But at this moment, I'm not too optimistic about spending that kind of money more.
No, I've made a request that we contact, uh. Comcast.
Yeah, see what they do.
Right.
And. Northwest Connecticut Main Street Promise. So that was. Uh. Something that I was involved with, actually continue to be involved with, it's through the Council of Governments and. They came out. Took a look at our Main Street. We walked them through Main Street. It was, uh, myself and Doug joined us and Eileen. And, um, it's a four-year project, so what they do is they come out and evaluate, they take a good hard look at your Main Street. To see your, uh. The good sides, the bad sides, uh, what they think might be great to emphasize. Uh, all sorts of different ideas for that, but it's over four year this project, so right now. It's at the very beginning stage. And. Um, at this point, all I can say is that they were very impressed with our Main Street. They thought we had a beautiful town. And, um, they're will be getting back to us, and what's nice is that. It's for. All of the, uh, hog towns, but we won't be lumped into comparisons with Torrenton, it'll be more, we will be. Working with like. Cornwall. Something that's more in tune with our town, so. Um, they won't come up with ideas that's just not suitable for. What we, uh, have here. So I'm looking forward to working a lot more with them. Uh. The Code of Ethics Draft. Is. A draft. And. Dave said he is. Reviewing and will be consulting the town attorney on. So that's where they stand right now. The Code of Methods, that's what we just did. We did two of them. We did two of them. And the one. Uh, recommendations to the Board of Finance to send to town meeting the following appropriations request, which we just talked about. Appropriation of a sum up to twelve thousand dollars from the Bridge Reserve Account. For the purpose of contracting Cardinal Engineering to prepare an analysis of the condition of some bridges in town. It should be noted that the recommendation was made at the July eighth, twenty twenty four, for the selection regular meeting. To appropriate the. Sum up to six thousand dollars from the Bridge Reserve Account. To contract Cardinal Engineering to prepare the necessary agreements, grants. For federal grant, one hundred percent to repair the Cobble Road Bridge and the Kane and Mountain Bridge. Um, then recommendations to the Board of Finance to send to town meeting the following appropriations request. Appropriate sum up to thirty thousand dollars from the one oh seven, one oh eight Main Street Reserve Account. To contract Valley Restorations to repair the roof at one oh seven Main. Okay, um, old business, thirty five railroad street update, um. All I know at this point is that the surveyors were there. Thursday, I think it was for.
I think Thursday.
Yeah.
Uh, no, Wednesday.
For the one.
Our meeting was Thursday.
Oh, right. Um. That's all I know about it. Do you know anything more?
I I don't have any, uh, update on thirty five Road Street.
Last Wednesday?
I think it was. I think it was last Wednesday. It was the day before I'm meeting at, uh.
Yes, you're correct. It was one of those.
Big sounds.
Yes. Thank you. Um, the economic development update. Basically, it's working with our, um. The Main Street Promise. Group and, um. Also. Taking a look at ordinances because some of the ordinances. Are so outdated and the amounts. That they're talking about and some of those, um. Will definitely need, yeah, if the. And we have tree replacement at Falls Village Inn. Chris?
Yeah, I've got two. Um. Quotes. Uh, I asked for three, the third one. Didn't want to get involved in it, uh. The one from Blue Spade Landscaping for two hundred and fifty dollars. For, uh. Uh, let's see, what did it say here? It was, uh. It's a two to three inch caliper. Uh. Crimson King, a thirty gallon. Pot, uh, includes all planting materials. Two hundred and fifty dollars for that one. The other, the other quote was, uh, for the same thing. Uh, from. This was from, uh, Salisbury. Uh, Garden Center for five hundred and fifty dollars plus tax. So I would like to make a motion. That we accept the two hundred and fifty dollar one from. Uh. Blue Spade Landscaping. And I'm not sure how we're going to pay for it. So. Uh.
And of that tree replacement. Line would cover that.
Some of the tree replacement reserve ones. Right? I don't see why I can't, I already have to wait, it's not meetings.
I have.
Let's, uh. Okay, so let's table this until, uh, Dave's back and we can figure out. I don't. I don't think it needs to go to, it's two hundred and fifty dollars. We we can find it somewhere. Um. I thought there was, I thought there was something in the. Selectmen's. Budget.
If I take care.
The gardeners.
There's garden, yeah, there's not much luck if you have. I'm glad.
Player is a new business for you.
Yeah, so it's not, I'm just seeing if there was a. Um, by now. Okay.
If we have, oh. Yeah, gardening, that's what we. Being a selectman.
What was in, uh? That's Capital Reserve, the, uh, tree replacement. Uh. Where was the one? What was the one for, uh? What's, what's Tim's budget for tree removal? It's just basically tree removal.
Tim's on tree removal.
Yeah.
Or for road maintenance, or well, a little bit of the garden. Major in a select.
Do we know what's left in that?
It's a really fiscal year, so.
Okay, yeah, then I make a motion, we, uh. We accept the Blue Spades pool for two hundred and fifty dollars. And fund it through, uh.
Do we have to indicate where the funding is coming from at this point?
I mean. No, I think this, if we do. It would, it would push this.
If we, if we say the appropriate line.
Okay, through the appropriate line.
Yeah, so.
Okay, okay.
Really, um, it.
It's.
Say.
You know, like select.
You said that a lot.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
You probably have to be reading that.
So the law, right, would be. So the need suggests that, um. We approve this and the appropriate line come. Out of the, um. Discretion of the first selectmen.
Okay, there you go.
And then we don't have to have another meeting.
Okay, that's the motion I had.
Okay.
I got it.
Any, any discussion?
To. Proven to the Board of Finance to prove it out of general funds. That is another option. It's under their. Twenty thousand dollars, but that would be up to that, so I don't really, I'm just putting it out on the off.
Okay, let me submit that for.
Uh, do you second that? Yes, I did. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. And it's nice because Blue Spade State is, uh, a Falls Village business.
Yeah.
Um, okay. So we'll let Dave decide where that's coming. Okay. To new business, tax rebates and consideration of approval of suspension list. Okay. So I make a motion to. Do this refund, um. One is for. A hundred and eighty dollars and thirty six cents. And the next one is for. Uh. Eight hundred and forty six dollars and fifty six cents. Make a, a motion to. Uh. Offer those refunds to.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
All favor? To. To the heart. Yeah. And there, we have. Recommendation to the Board of Finance to recommend to town meeting the following appropriations. Appropriate a sum of up to twelve thousand dollars from the Bridge Reserve Account. Number one seven oh two six four six six eight nine. For the purpose of contracting Cardinal Engineering to prepare an analysis of the condition of six bridges in town. Yes, but. I don't think we do that, but. So we don't have this. Okay, so we've already approved.
We've already, yeah, that's right.
All right, so we'll move on to discussion. And I'll hand it over to Chris for the solar project committee update.
Yeah, we haven't, uh, really haven't done anything with that. I've read about, uh, what happened in Sharon. And, um. Daily's been sending me some. Um. Periodicals on that. Uh, I would like to ask Michelle if you at some point. Uh, now that this, we're into the new fiscal year and hopefully your transition to QuickBooks is. Pretty well. Uh, if you could put together, um, for the solar committee. Uh. The power, I guess the power usage and. Uh, for the town-owned properties. For the past year.
Okay. And who am I sending? Am I sending it to you?
Yeah, you can send it forward to me and, uh, we'll put together another solar meeting and get that ball rolling and gun.
Do you want? Scan companies of the bills?
That'd be great. That'd be fantastic. Yeah, yeah. Uh, Bridge and Infrastructure Committee. Uh, I have a tentative meeting set up on the twenty first with, uh. Uh. Allied Engineering. And I may have to to change that because I don't think I'm going to have a, a forum, uh. Then I'll let you know, Tim, because you're the, you'll be the key guy at that one. Uh. But maybe we can, uh, I'll, I'll put a, I'll put a, uh, send a text out tomorrow and see if we can get a better, uh, handle on maybe, probably to sometime in September. That'll be our next, uh, Bridge and Infrastructure. Uh, committee meeting. In particular, I want to talk about. Uh. Salt fed. And, uh. A wash rack. Uh, so Tim can use the pressure washer up there in the town garage, um, and see if. If, uh, Allied can put together some kind of, um. Some kind of a proposal for that and, uh. Maybe then again. After that. Maybe begin to look at, uh. The grants to help, uh. Subsidize that proj- project.
What did, did you say the infrastructure meeting?
I thought it was the twenty first.
That's, that's another meeting. We have the twenty second.
Or the twenty second, maybe.
There is.
Yes, twenty second, I'm saying, yeah. So probably, I'll probably push it out till after uh, Labor Day.
Alright, anything else on me?
No.
Uh, any other business to probably come before the board of selection? Public comment? Okay.
Blue, here first. Public comment?
Yes, um, hi, sorry, I'm a bit late. Um, I, and this may have already been. Brought up, but I just wanted to check in on the status of some of the grants um. First, ask if any of them been applied for that you know of. Um, and then just make a comment that we've sent out a lot to our committees that were. Were proud to have been able to share.
You talked about that a little bit earlier, um, pretty sure that Dave has finished that cyber grant and submitted that. Um, not positive, but pretty sure. And with status of other uh, commissions and nonprofits, I don't know if they've done anything. We did receive the bike grant.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Jamie?
Okay, I'm still a quickie, you mentioned. Alright, I forgot to answer any questions from earlier. And uh, that was about if we're getting so much grant money, why taxes? Well, first of all, I'm gonna say we did pay our taxes for a rating uh, last year or what, or day? And also both, both have and um, and we as, as I said in the letter, we have paid a good first half of this this year. Uh, but I did wanna make clear that grants are budgeted beforehand. And they do not include money for operating costs and property taxes for our operating. So that's really the answer that uh, I actually given earlier as well. Thank you.
Okay, Jamie.
Phil?
Uh, yes, and again, following some of these other comments. I believe that the Falls Village housing may be quite clear from two thousand and ten. That for example, the river road was probably would indeed pay. Uh, property taxes to the town. And I think it's correct somewhere. First, there are operating expenses that they will have, and it's a very important project that they've uh undertaken on prospective high streets. I'm very in favor, but I just think that they need to uh, provide full operating expense information. To the town, there is to town, to uh, be generous with it. Respect that.
Andy?
Alright, so. Housing does not get to uh, be exempt from property taxes. The way central may might be or some other private might see true. Housing specifically is not exempt from ta- uh, from property taxes, which is why we've always said we would pay taxes. Now, saying that you're paying taxes does not mean that you. Will always be paying a hundred percent of taxes. And it may be that you ask to pay fifty percent of taxes. However, this will all be moved after October of this year happens because at that point. The state is putting its money where its mouth is about affordable housing. And affordable housing be assessed differently than. If a property that somebody would get market rated rents and. It may actually be less than fifty percent of the contact is had from uh, assessed as rated was. Uh, um, to read this is that there's restricted income. So uh, once uh, we are reacpriced in October due to uh, take into account restricted income. That we can take in for our affordable housing, then it's kind of a sale of.
Thank you, Jamie. Anybody else? I think that's for us.
We, we close, we agree.
To your second, all in favor? Seven, nine. For the board?
Okay, here's what we have for us, so let's call the meeting reporter. Um, I believe that Ginger and. The term, Faro are one to. Or at least they said they will be.
Ginger is on. Like he's coming along. You'll be on me if everybody.
Yeah, I think so. Oh, thank you. Okay. That brings us to our usual times for public comment. I'd like to eliminate any other but five minutes, two minutes. To anyone on, on the floor or overseeing uh, that we have in the public comments.
I have one.
Alright.
As we, um, we didn't have a meeting last month, but it came up as a huge voice, like, please. The policy for the town now been updated since two thousand and sixteen. And more important, the book, the Board of Finance Policy Notebook is empty. Except when one policy gone back to go down, so we have no Board of Finance policies.
Oh, wow.
Uh, available to anyone. And. Exactly, and it's concerned, definitely. There's, there's a lot of policies you guys have to abide by, but there's an unwritten rule that anyone else.
Statutorily, we have to.
How's that?
Yes, remember there's the one um, where the first select we can't go over line item by more than five hundred dollars. Where Dave mentioned one where Tim's line items can, he can move things around unlike other.
Okay.
Things and uh, there's several. Where to find your policy, I remember twenty years ago, I was in the title, I'm looking up the, except the one policy that is ancient.
But is that policy or statutes?
Kind of.
We have our own policies, our person, oh.
Yes.
Put in a word, they're missing.
Yeah, they're missing, they're missing, yeah.
But you have nothing to fall back on.
I wonder if we can.
Is what you're saying.
There must be.
If we can check with their fellow for selectmen, see if they have any copies.
But there would be, I would think that there'd be minutes, all the minutes have to be saved, because do the minutes have to be saved for how long?
He says he does not know where they are. So anyway, I'm just bringing your attention that.
That's the way.
That's something.
Whatever, and this is gonna have to be forwarded, wouldn't be.
Yes.
And I wonder if any of our neighbor and towns have discussed it. Not a little bit.
You know.
Yeah, I think it's uh, things that we've decided, um, it might be worth our putting it on an agenda. Either tonight or in the future to talk about how we need to bring that book up to, to date and available.
So. Say, when you guys made a policy that the general fund cannot go under twelve million.
Just an example.
So that should have been typed up and put in the policy, but I don't know who does that, how do you do it, but.
Yeah, what, what I meant was, I knew we had some policies, what I meant was um. Uh, I mean, the whole thing's been wiped out, it's been.
Somebody must have it somewhere, like a past member or somebody.
I think we could talk to some former first selectmen to see what they have, because that's somebody like this who might have a copy.
So maybe, do you wanna, do you wanna put it on tonight's agenda? Or do you wanna put it on a future agenda, um, you said he made powers?
I think that's a public comment, so I don't know, is that?
It's a suggestion. No, it's just a suggestion though that for us to consider.
No, no, but Denise is a public comment versus. Of society's putting on which.
I think when we get to her. For.
Cause I'm just saying it's something to consider.
I'll do that.
We have public comments? And yeah.
Public comment.
I don't know, I'm doing that.
Alright, I have two amendments to the agenda from the board of selectmen. Uh, number one, to consider recommending to your town meeting. The appropriation of up to thirty thousand dollars. For the purposes of repairing the roof that one oh seven Main Street. Based on an estimate provided by Valley Restoration. The funds are to come out of the one oh seven slash one oh eight property reserve account. Number one, seven, zero, two, six, three, zero, five, four, one, which has approximately thirty four thousand dollars.
Uh, I'll move to have that an, an amendment to the agenda uh, made as item nine G.
All of us in favor?
You'll need a second.
So.
Alright, alright, and the second amendment, to consider recommending to town meeting. The appropriation of up to twelve thousand dollars. For the purpose of evaluating the six bridges in town that are less than twenty feet long. For repairs, lifeline and maintenance. Based on the estimate provided by Cardinal Engineering, the funds are to come out of the bridge reserve account. Uh, one, seven, zero, two, six, four, six, six, oh, nine. Not sure of the balance in that account, but now.
It's enough.
It's enough, that covers it.
Um, I'll move to add item nine H to the agenda.
Second. Discussion. All of us in favor of discussion, please? Yeah, I said especially.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we know which those, we get a list of those six bridges?
Yeah.
Why, why? Uh, or you can submit, yeah, submit. Uh, when we get to that part of the general, to do the list. I haven't looked at this.
I can read them too. No, what, when we get.
We'll get, we'll get to, we're gonna get to nine H, so.
Yeah.
No, you need to ask this, all in favor now that discussion.
Okay, now the discussion, uh, so uh, the item agenda number one. To recommend this town meeting appropriation of up to thirty thousand dollars.
No, we did that, we do that one, we just need to ask for all.
Oh, we actually need to ask the vote for that. And the second one for the twelve thousand dollars for the bridge inspections. All of us in favor?
Alright.
Alright, thank you. Alright. Uh, there are no other uh, amendments to the agenda. Do we have any written or all two of these? Alright, Phil, that takes us to the recorder. Uh, we'll start with the Secretary of the Chief Counsel, two thousand and twenty four, by the right guard moving man. We'll have any comments on that?
Well, first, I'd like to make the move to approve the June tenth, twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes.
All of us in favor?
No, you need a second?
Second.
And then you can do a discussion if anyone has come.
Any discussions?
Um. Is it the same thing with that account or items, not item new business C? That account has appropriate funds for that one? I thought that number was a lower. It's another one that moved, so you did, hold on. So the eighty two thousand dollars for the log roof?
Yeah.
One oh two, two, three oh five?
What year is the transfer is gonna go in, so it will be.
So the, there's enough balance to cover the eighty two thousand?
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Alright.
I'm gonna abstain, so wasn't at that meeting.
I'm sorry, I'm not going to stay today.
Yeah, I wasn't there, so.
Alright, next we have treasure reports, three of them.
We have the table during July.
Yes.
May.
Okay, so May, um, June is, I haven't, it was out for the fiscal year and in process. You have some closing out entries tonight, and then you'll get that, that in July and August, and just. Four K V, but I don't get it.
So I moved to table, I moved table to June thirtieth or July thirty first, treasure reports to next meeting.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Hi.
Alright.
I'll move to approve the May thirty first, twenty twenty four treasures, I mean, X, receive the May thirty first, twenty twenty four treasures report. To put it on the table.
I'll second that.
All of us in favor?
I just have one question, one question.
Um.
Any discussion, Charlie?
Yeah, just, just a question, really. Um, so end of May. Um, Michelle, we're projecting the general fund as of June thirty to be nine seventy seven. Does that take into account your best estimate at this point of the taxes that we want, Paul?
Uh, it, well, no, not that of May. Um, so I don't know, we'd have to look at how they're, they're plumping in June to see, uh, but that does take into account, we've only sent about uh. It was thirty eight thousand dollars that we brought in, it was being accepted from a forestry.
Right.
Or forest land issue, so. I don't, I would have, unfortunately, I don't know, because to go to and tell you exactly what's uncollected.
Sure.
It's, it's very little unwanted taxes.
Um, so when we get the June thirty report.
You will get, it won't be projected anymore, that will be the fine.
It's a, so that, that number, if we didn't, I seem to recall there was a significant uh, number of taxes that the tax collector said. Or some, somewhere on some of these reports was reflected, there had not been collected, and it was, it was not a small number.
As of May, there was fifty three thousand about collected, so. Look, I'm assuming she's collected a little during June, but I don't, it's not gonna be the full of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So we asked all.
Uh, all in favor of accepting the uh, May thirty first report?
To for receiving it, uh, right.
Alright.
Alright. And we're tabling, uh. We have a motion table, June thirtieth and July first.
Tax.
All of us in favor?
For tax collectors, but we already took care.
Always took care, okay, thank you. Tax collector's report, June thirtieth and July thirty first.
I'd like to move to table that since those are not available. Till the next meeting.
That would make sense, let's say. Alright, we have a motion table, that, all those in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
So we stopped it?
I do.
They see.
And Board of Education report. Uh, which I spread it out, but I have not read uh, thoroughly, June thirtieth and July thirty first.
Can we do one? I'll move to, uh, just to get it on the table for discussion, I move to um. Put the Board of Edu- to receive the Board of Education's report for June thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
One of the secrets, okay, like, what?
Uh, I have this, I, here. Yes, we just don't, I'm sorry, May, May, what is this one, this is?
Yeah, we're working for June thirtieth and July, but we don't want that yet.
We have one, we only have, I'm sorry, we only had May, May.
Alright, but we don't have to do anything with May, this is not on.
Right. So just. But just, we're in the middle of some.
And let us, we vote on this and then we'll.
Sorry.
Just a second, we've finished, we have to finish something.
We're in the middle of a motion, I think, so, or preparing to move.
We can't, we can't accept it because we can't make a move because.
Right.
We don't have them, so just, we make.
Well, we have, we have July.
We have so.
We have July, but we don't have.
Okay, I didn't think, I haven't cringed anything, so I didn't.
We do have July, so I'll, I'll ma- I'll revise my motion. To receive the Board of Education's July thirty first.
To receive, yeah.
Yes. Anyone wants to second that?
A second.
Discussion.
I do have some questions, but I don't know if anyone can answer them to me. But I, they're not, uh, I'm not concerned or worried, I just, um, I would love to know, I mean, it looks like we're. We have. We have. Significantly under. Um, under anticipated fuel oil and diesel oil from the budgeted amount. Um, it's, looks like it's like two hundred percent more than we had anticipated. Is that July's? July, um.
July's, we're rich from.
And, uh, and then. Should be the new fiscal year, uh, yeah. Yeah, but isn't it, isn't that percentage of the whole budget? And if the whole budget was half that amount, so that's one question. Yeah, so that's one question I had, and then I had one more question. Which is. Um. Non-instructural equipment is a, a lot higher than, uh, they also had anticipated by, it's three hundred and seventy percent more. Again, you know, I'm not, I don't. I'm not overly concerned about our Board of Education, they seem to manage their budget, I was just interested for my own education, and I'll wait till the next meeting. To learn, where I'll contact, uh, the Board of Ed for information, so I'm done with mine. Uh, anybody, anybody else?
So Steve, are you saying that they're, is it pre-purchase or pre-allocate? If you will.
Well, wondering if they purchased it already, that's. Now.
So neither, doing what, see, we have a session about. Filing rates and. Securing it, so.
Right, we did, right.
I, I just wanted for all that's been done, then, you know. Because that is. You know, you thought so? About the, the fuel. Why the fuel was doubled?
Fuel was, uh.
Fuel oil. He's just up to the city, too, yeah.
Yeah, it was just, it's just education.
We'd have to get the information from them.
Still, it's different fiscal years. And I have not, you see, and I don't. Do they?
What you're saying is, well, that's a bad one, but then right down, we never feed upon them.
You do know, you're part of the. What? I would have to get. Of course, I don't, I don't know, yeah, I don't know what they mean. And you see, that's been tight, maybe, which, you know.
She was probably have to table it for next month.
That's what I'm going to.
Saying, but if. If we haven't looked at it, I don't know, you know, we're just receiving it, so then.
Any insight to share?
Just wondering if they paid that, you know, they paid that upfront and they're anticipating a credit once.
Well, I'll learn later.
We'll, we'll have to learn later because none of us know.
I believe we have a motion on the floor. It's the seconded, any more discussion on that?
Can you repeat the motion, please, so that I.
Should we see the July thirty-first?
July thirty.
Education report, yeah.
All was in favor?
Aye.
So I move then to table the June thirtieth report, till we have a chance to look at it.
Seconded.
All was in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And.
Oh, wait, who wants to make a comment, I think that.
I'll go to the chair.
Sure, yeah, I know.
Oh, yes. We can do that.
Let me play our last, the, the board of finance, we request a few minutes to explain. Reason for this, and requesting that the board finance enact a supplemental appropriation. To the title, the budget titled Town Council, which is. Numbered by code one, zero, zero, three, dash, four, zero, one. The reason I do that is that it was my understanding. As the legal services fund, which I'll call it, was reduced because there wasn't, it wasn't spent. Uh, I would point out that it's never meant to be spent per se, speaking from some experience. Twelve years on the board, so I can, you know, I forgot, I'm a, this is. Uh, they, it's not a plan, it's not like a, a funding for asset, which is planned to be spent. That's the plan. The legal services rarely is planned, is planned to spend. There would be the case if there's a bond, bond intensive, that's something like that, it's a contingency. It's there to be available, so that the selectmen and the executive department. Can make timely decisions that are not handed out, I'm wondering whether the resource will be available. And not, not at all, there's no visceral. Consent it to spend that money, like, for example, a donut. Where there's a visceral, um, reason to spend it, some of it, or maybe all of it, the donuts is a little. People, so it's a tool for the executive department. And if there were a person that was still making loss control. Like consultant for the town, that will be a discrepancy, that that resource is not available. And I'm not saying this for the benefit of the selectmen or as a favor to them. I'm saying that as a citizen who cares as a town, as a proper resources for government administration. And funding that allows the executive department, which is that, that is what they are, the executive department. To be able to make those decisions that sometimes come fast and loops. During the time I was first electing, I was in court, I think, at other times. Uh, decisions had to be made that. That represented a possible chain of errors, you make a mistake at the beginning. Of that chain of error, that, that the error is real, and you have a real problem, you need to make the right one. And not be immediate that by concern as to how you're gonna pay for it. Well, are there any questions you have of me, in, in my thinking? Well, I thank you for hearing me out, and again. You know, I firmly ask you to reconsider it such that you either say yes or no, so the public can know where you stand. On that question.
Are you suggesting a certain level?
Sorry, sorry, research, original.
What I'd be asking you to do is to enact a supplemental appropriation to refund that account to the previous amount of the six thousand we don't. That's, if, I mean, for me, it's like a fire extinguisher. If you have a fire extinguisher and it tests bad at some point, you don't say, well, we might use that, so let's not replace it. It's there as a resource that you may need and may need right then. If there's no other questions, I have nothing more to say. I through you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to hear.
Please look.
As far as all, when we just got, as we should do, the question is, what's the budget? Um. The, um, the lack of use of this fund. Over the last several years is what caught our attention. Now, we believe. That sort of need arrived. That the board could authorize a supplemental, uh, appropriation for legal expenses.
So I, I'd like to move that we add this to the agenda for discussion, then, if, if you'd like. Uh, as, as nine, I, I guess.
I'll, I'll second it.
In discussion on that, I'm happy to have the conversation, but I don't wanna have it tonight, we just heard this thirty seconds ago. So I'd be willing to put it on the agenda for our next regular meeting.
I have, I rescind that, I rescind my, uh, my motion, because I, I think we do have not a lot on the agenda tonight. So maybe we'll get that. Because it was sad.
Give me a minute.
Uh, I'll amend my, uh, uh, my motion that we put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Scotty. Do you have a, do you have a second?
I'll second the amendment.
Uh, discussion? All was in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Now, when you motion to approve the law, you know. We both, we.
Yeah, we have to approve, we have to. Vote on the, the main motion.
I'm moved to vote on the main motions. To move it to the, uh. Uh, next meeting.
Do you have a second? Discussion? All was in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I mean, September regular meeting, I'll list.
Okay, yeah, back to me again. Regular, that's a company. Judy, where are? My mom?
Yep.
Is, are you ready for Jim's report?
Yes.
Can you do that today? All right, um, first up, we, um. Upon the recommendation of P and Z, we appointed Eileen Kinsella as an alternate during a special meeting on August eighth. She, she's a new alternate. And, um, the town of Kanean received a DOT micro grant for bicycle pedestrian safety. Uh, it's a five thousand dollar grant to, um. Working with conjunction of Leach, Keller Schools, so they have, uh, bicycle safety courses, equipment, and. All sorts of things to encourage for bike ride. We also received a cost for the transfer station IT. Which is, uh, to get. From Frontier. To get them hooked up, um, would cost either five hundred and ninety dollars a month for fifty M P, M B S. Or eight hundred and ninety dollars a month for a hundred N B S. So it's pretty expensive.
Really?
Yeah, so that's Frontier. So, um, we're going to look, see what contest has done.
Cast question about that?
Yeah.
So what is the, uh? What, what is the scope or the reason to move, uh, Wi-Fi to the transfer station?
We had been asked by, um, some of the public to get it over there. So that the transfer station attendee could do some of his work on site.
So why, why are civilians asking and town employees to have resources? Seems odd. Right, you would think that the. Transportation coordinator would be requesting their own resources?
Which is interesting to me, because the first time that I've heard that the public is asked, I don't, I thought it was, um, I thought Peter had questioned the fact that, um. He has to take the work home to do, do the computer work at home, maybe something's been going on for a while.
But I didn't, I didn't realize that was a tax, that's.
No, no.
That has been some members of the public who have asked to do that.
First of all, it's. He's doing two jobs. Transportation coordinator, tending. When he's in the building, onsite, he's an attendant. Right, transportation coordinator is a stipend, which means he does that on his own time, because he gets paid a stipend. If he can do all his transportation coordinator work at the time in which he's an attendant. Then I would question why we even had the stipends with the coordinator job in the first place. Because apparently he has enough time to do both at the same time.
So I did not realize that, so this is actually information.
So it's a stipend for that extra work? Um, he's gotta, he's gotta have internet at home.
My question is, it doesn't require him to be onsite to be the coordinator?
No. No. My wife did that job for five years, and she never needed to do any of that onsite.
And she got paid to do it.
On her own time, and that means off, off, off days. Sometimes you have to be there on a Wednesday to get a container moved, it's, it's the stipend is for. She was there, she was an attendant.
Do you know, anybody? How much is the stipend is for that, I don't guess? Michelle, you can do that.
But in the meantime, we are collecting this information so that we.
That's fine.
Nowhere.
I personally, I'd like to voice my opinion that I think it's nonsense for the selectmen to be pursuing. An avenue of something that was not requested by an employee in his town.
It was, didn't Peter request it?
Citizens.
Well, no, I don't know anything about that, I.
I believe, have you seen the writing, is it, is it part of the budget conversation?
I've never seen it.
I believe so. Did I come for the board finance?
We've talked about, we've got a whole file, and.
This, the previous administration was talking about it as well, I believe.
That's right, but it's not a matter of whether, I just wanna know, Peter has asked for it, whether or not we need to do it or not agree to do it, I just wanna know. You know, because this is the first time I've heard that the citizens, because I couldn't care less whether you have anything at there, you know, it's, you drop your garbage off and you go home. Um, but. If Peter's asked for it, I'd like to know what his reasoning is for asking. In agreement with, if that indeed is a stipend, how much is it?
So, this is last fiscal year, so there's a three point percent.
Don't ask me to do math, Michelle.
I know, it's, it's still like, oh, seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven.
So he gets seven thousand dollars extra?
As transfer state, or transfer station coordinator.
Coordinator. And how much time does that job take?
What is the statement, John?
That's what I mean, I don't know, do we have a job description?
Sure, yeah.
Do we?
Or, or, uh. Uh, line of reports on average job description.
Yeah, I think.
I think there is one, I've seen. I'm giving you.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't come down to.
I'm just giving you the experience, but I, I understand the job probably better than anybody in this room, by the way.
Which is fine, that's. A job. Job description as well.
I believe she actually helped develop it during her tenure.
Okay, but is it one in writing, do you know of the, the job descriptions? I've never seen, I don't know, that's, I'm asking, you, you've never seen it either?
Go into the transfer station. Check, go through the file cabinet, I bet it's there.
Well, is that something, Judy, that we can ask you to just look into source?
Yeah, mostly though. If you, it would be, uh. Um, helpful for us to know that the request is justified, be it, that, in that it is being asked by the person, the employee.
For the prices.
For the most, that's the most important thing, and, and perhaps it has, but that, that would be really.
Yeah, I'm kind of just trying to work through how this all came about, and that's a good number.
Yep. Okay. We will look into it more. Um, the Northwest Connecticut Main Street Promise Program is something that I'm involved with. This is a program through the club. And it's a four-year program. So it's a collaboration, it's called Northwest Connecticut Main Street Promise. And it stands for a partnership to revitalize our main streets with integrated solutions and efforts. So the first phase, um, is to tour the main streets, which we have done. And, um, they take into account all our infrastructure, the buildings, everything else that we've got. And then, um, they'll start compiling information for us, what they. Think is, um, potential, things that we could be looking at, grant funding, it's. Sounds like a really good resource.
I didn't ask this question at the selectmen's meeting, but does it involve things that we don't, when you talk about infrastructure, we don't have a source system, it's gonna come and bite us in the panty at some point because of the size of the law and.
So I'll be taking it.
So they're looking into what we should be doing, not just what we have.
Right.
Okay.
So, um, and like I said, with the selectmen's meeting, they don't classify us with. Other of the big towns in the northwest corner, like, we're not. In the same category as, like, Torrenton and that, so we need the smaller towns. And they would come up with more ideas suitable for a smaller town. All for the, with the aim of revitalization, yes, right, and, and a healthy sustainability. Right, and suggestions like for P and Z for mixed uses and things like that.
Are they going to research, you mentioned grants, is this something that they would be researching grants that we may need or that we could use to improve our infrastructure?
That would probably come down, um.
I mean, are they gonna recommend, after they've done their whole report, they'll say, you know, this grant's available, that grant's available?
Yes, the partnership is expected to last for four years. With annual community deliverables that support the region's growth and overall progress. In each phase, the CMSC will develop specific recommendations for each community as well as regional recommendations. That have demonstrated good outcomes. The first year will focus on assessing the assets and capacity of each community. Providing recommendations and technical assistance for key activities that support local communities. And developing funding strategies to implement. Identified recommendations, so this is all over.
So they would prioritize what we should be, you know, like, phasing in, this is what you could do.
Right now, they're gathering all the information and they're getting. A feel, they look at our town plan. To see what the community has said about Main Street, um, they just keep asking lots of questions. So, um, that they can better address what are weeds of. And knowing that we're one of the smallest main streets that they're. Working with, they say it'll be a challenge, but. But they were very impressed with what we have already. Thought we were an outstanding, beautiful town. So, that's what Main Street is. And the next thing is. And the next thing is uh the code of ethics, we have a draft that's for review and Dave would like to send that to a town attorney for taking a look at it. So there's a cost for legal. The uh the other thing was what you had put on the agenda to bring to town meeting um towards the uh appropriations for the move here, which if you go into that room, you'll see around the high ground windows outside, it wasn't properly flashed. It's all backing up into the building, so it really does desperately need to be addressed before it gets even worse. And then Chris has been working on with the uh bridges. And I do have the list of the bridges. So we'll get, when we get to that.
Okay.
And I think that's all I have to tell you, Summer.
Julie, I can allow touch, what's happening with the fireworks?
Uh, we do not know if anything right now, um a survey was done on Wednesday, last Wednesday.
That's news.
Yes, but as anything else we do.
But that somehow was.
Yeah, I know that we're waiting for the survey.
I have a question for me, Judy, about the the cafe. Rumors are flying around that the people who run the cafe are gonna vacate the lease. Has the selectmen been talking about that? Is there any truth to that?
Um. Yes and no, I don't think a final decision has been made. They.
I heard.
So.
They're thinking about vacating the lease, the people who were on the cafe, was it?
I have heard those rumors too, but it hasn't, they have not directly said anything to me.
Okay.
So I'm not positive, but
okay.
We're hopeful that something is in there. It's a big benefit to the town. It's a loss.
Well, I would hope that if they do leave that um the matter be addressed anew because that lease is seriously under market and there wasn't, I looked at the lease, there's no provision in there for the adjustment of rents on renewal, it just says to the mutual agreement of the parties. So the way that thing is handled all along, it never went to a town vote, it should have.
Mm-hmm.
The renewal, I think, was improper and the rent is, as I said, under market, so I hope that um the selectmen uh discussed that before they take any action on finding a new tenant. Finding a new tenant, no, find a new tenant, that's great, but in terms of uh executing a lease, I mean, that has to go to a town meeting.
It's okay.
That didn't have consideration.
Is is the rent up to the?
Yes, I believe so, the rent is paid.
Is that renewal leases or new um new new people who live above it?
Is one. Well, what this is going to do is new new people in the property. Going forward, if they leave, you need to manage it a little bit, it's smashed.
We're not looking at.
Yeah.
Town vote for every renewal or lease.
No.
Just making sure I was clear.
Yes. Thank you.
There's your new question. Thank you.
Now let's get to the bridge ones.
We have a suspense items.
Any suspense items, Michelle?
So we have. This is the best. Another bridge population.
No, this is the one.
No, no.
Oh, oh, right, this is, that's that's G, sorry.
Specifically related to uh
Great.
Cobble Road Bridge and Canyon Mountain Bridge. Not twelve thousand dollars prior to the other small bridges.
Okay, so to get it on the table, should I just make a motion to consider to recommend a town meeting?
I believe so.
A a calculation of six thousand from the bridge reserve account number that's in here for the purpose of hiring fernal engineering to prepare the proper grant and paperwork for federal funding of a hundred percent of that funding for the repair of Cobble Road Bridge and Canyon Mountain Road Bridge, so we just need a second to get it on the table.
We have second.
Okay.
Discussion.
And any discussion? Call us in favor.
You know.
I knew you might have got in my thoughts, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm gonna ask the question to for the selectmen um. That is just to prepare paperwork for the grant, right? That six thousand goes to totally.
Yeah, preliminary uh permit.
Okay.
Permitting.
Certified. So it's not really any, any forward, no physical work, just getting paperwork, permits and all that stuff, okay, thank you.
It's a jumper with state hoops.
Yeah, and right now we have just under twenty, at least, I think.
Yeah.
As of, we have under twenty-five thousand.
So the six thousand here and the twelve thousand here from the same account, still, still, yep.
Okay, any other discussion? All motion favor?
All right, to town meeting it goes.
Number two, right? Well, four by ten o'clock.
Now, the next guy has the general fund discussion. Although I'm not sure of the specifics of that discussion, arms.
Dave, can you recognize me on this?
So what are we talking about?
The general fund discussion, um. I don't recall exactly um how it's on the agenda either, but it was, it was at least in part my idea, um. We had some discussions during budget season about um the financial health of the town, um. There was a belief in some quarters that our general fund was rising um and there was a belief that some of the cost-cutting measures that we took were um perhaps more austere than that they needed to be. So I thought it would be a good idea to actually put uh some some numbers in front of the board, so you know exactly what we're talking about, and I asked Denise to to put together two pieces of information for us that she can circulate now.
Stick one unless you fasten that.
And Michelle, just to, because you're our treasurer. Yeah. Michelle, I guess.
And then this one as well.
One to the needs too. Please, do you have any information about the reserve funds?
I have got it.
Do you have any information similar compared to comparisons to the reserve?
Something's on the involved.
So does everybody have these two pieces of paper?
Yeah.
Um, shouldn't take more than a minute or so to go through, so if you look at the the sheet that has less typing on it, uh the one that it says Paul's Village General Fund History. Um. And it it shows you um what our general fund was at the end of twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, where it's projected to be um at the end of most recent fiscal year, and that number might be a little less because of the tax collection issue we talked about a few minutes ago. Um, and we agreed to commit up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars um of that to budget relief for next year, so that number, um even if you start with a ninety-seven, that um unless we collect revenue we don't expect, that number will be eight twenty-seven um at the end of of the year that we just started, so we have, not surprisingly, a declining uh general fund, and the reason why it's declining is simply that we're running deficits every year, we're not raising enough taxes to pay for our entire expense budget, and so we have to dip into the general fund to make up the difference, and that accounts for the decline, so so everybody should, I think, be be clear-eyed about the trend that because we are spending more than we're raising in taxes and having to dip into the general fund, then absent some fortuitous collection of revenue that you didn't expect, the general fund will continue to go down unless we raise tax rates quite a bit to make sure that we don't have a deficit. So tha- that's just a fact, and I I wanted to make sure that uh there's no confusion about the possibility that the general fund is increasing, it's not increasing, it's decreasing. Now, if you look at the second page, that's a comparison of um Falls Village with our five neighbors in the northwest corner. And if you look at um the first column, um it's showing our unassigned um meaning the portion of our general fund um that we haven't committed to budget relief for the coming year. It's showing where we were at the end of twenty-three, the the data's not out yet for twenty-four, and these numbers were taken from the management letters that the various auditors for the towns put together, so that's the source of this information. Um. So you can see where we are, uh we're we're a smaller town than most of our neighbors, but um our unassigned general fund is um by a large measure, smaller than all of the other towns. Now, a key data point, and we discussed this when we adopted the policy of um not allowing our general fund to fall below the level that would cover, I think it was twelve and a half percent um of our expenditures for the year, uh we're right about it that right now, according to the management letter, twelve percent, but you can see, and I'm not saying they're they're right, you can just see the gap, the other towns are way far ahead of us, they've got much more in terms of the ability to go through a dry spell and cover their general fund their their expenditures than we are, and it's it's just worth noting.
So what percentage of their their municipal budget?
It's it's municipal.
And Board of Education, thank you.
Um, so there you have it, now just in terms of liabilities, um you can see what what the general numbers are, we're we're either the the most borrowing uh or the least borrowing, but given the size of our unassigned general fund, uh our debt load is is not as comfortable, I think, that uh has sometimes been thought. Um, and then if you look at reserves, we're we're uh with the exception of uh Cornwall um and Sharon, uh we're considerably behind the the other towns, now the other towns are bigger, Salisbury, Kent uh and North Canaan, but this this gives you a an accurate glimpse of uh of what our relative financial strength is compared to our neighbors in the northwest corner. Um. And we need to keep this in mind as we go through this year and ultimately speed into the next budget season, so this is just for information.
Well, I mean, from my perspective and take this whatever way you want, these numbers are just presented to me now. I have no way to validate them, so uh it's good information, however, I think a work session that includes our town attorney would make sense to go through these numbers and make sure they're in line with what they can. We need a work session regardless.
As as I said a few minutes ago, they came from the management letters of the auditors.
Just where you audited the town, so it's.
Right, and I have the paper in front of me that just had numbers on. Okay, where you count. We have numbers in front of me, that's all, I'm just saying.
Yeah, so it's.
We're the board of finance member and I need to do my due diligence, and seeing two pieces of paper isn't due diligence, so we need to have a look session to look through this information.
There's no work session, this is just data off the management letters, there's no work for us to do, it's just information. And if you doubt what I'm saying, check the management letters, they're online, that's where the data came from.
Right, but you can give me two pieces of paper, it doesn't mean anything to it.
Well, I don't know why it wouldn't, it's hard information, I'm telling you where it came from.
So, so but this is the kind of information that we can have further conversations using this.
I think his point is.
So it it's great to have this handy, and as Tom pointed out, it's great to go back to the sources and consider it, and I I hope that we'll continue to have conversations using this kind of data, John, and I, you know, it's appreciated. Um, and you know, maybe there's even more data that would be helpful to us when we look at this too. So I think it's a good conversation to start and always continue.
I was just paranoid with the conversation you've had during budget season, which is that to get ahead of it, we will sit down and have that work session, that works this year, it works this in totality to get ahead of it in future years, and instead of waiting for the last last couple of months.
Yes, but all I'm saying about this is nothing to get ahead of, there's nothing to discuss, these are just facts that relate to the past, and they're information that can inform us to make better decisions as we go through the budget season.
We won't, we won't get anything till next year, right, for twenty twenty-four, right?
We'll have it, we'll have it at the end of the audit.
When's the audit?
The audits are going to start once they close the books.
Okay, so we.
But I think I believe we heard it in the summer.
Definitely will get it.
It's usually when we get it, November or December. So we'll have some more information then too.
Do you want to add this? That's all I have there. I'm sorry.
Excited?
It's a sketching meetings with commissions and organizations, which we're talking about this, I know for a lot of people a lot of times you get a heads up. And preach the board's knowledge of various uh commissions that were assigned appropriations to. I think we need someone on board to just take a point on this. It's it's a sketch range. Strictly a sketch range, you know, I think most the commissions will be receptive to meeting with us well in advance.
We have to post special meetings, I guess, they can't.
Put them as part of your agenda, if you wanted. Some information, if you wanted.
We only have one meeting a month. Just kind of.
How many commissions and.
How many commissions do we want to have? Will come talk to us.
And how many are there?
Well, yeah, we need a list. As I recall, this came up in the discussion with fire commission. Well, they said they would welcome the actor to make us.
To discuss all with the boards and commissions, the firing part.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, right, yeah.
Is, right, so you're asking someone to volunteer a court person?
I am.
Yeah, not.
It's actually my things get done.
Right.
Somebody has to say, I'll do it.
So Dave, can you say one one more time what you're looking for somebody to do?
Looking for somebody to, one, make a list of the commissions that we should meet with.
Okay.
And then two, take responsibility for scheduling.
Okay.
Working out how we're special meetings, informal meetings, however, we can do that.
Okay, well, um I don't know that they have to be special meetings if we if we're efficient with how we use our regular meeting time and we don't want to overburden the board by.
No, I I know, that that's that's a consideration.
So if we, if there were, for example, six to eight uh departments in town that we wanted to talk to, and we did one of them at the tail end of every regular meeting, we'd have, we'd have them all done long before budget season uh next time, um.
However, I think the list should be fair, it's easy to draw up.
Yeah.
Simply on the basis of the amount of funds.
I'll volunteer to to put a list before the boards who we discuss it with our next meeting.
Yes.
I would argue that just that some some commissions this early may not know what their plans are for the next six, next year is, so we, maybe we can you know, try to catch it towards a little bit later on.
Um. Well, I don't, I don't know that we need to get into what what their plans are so much.
We want to understand.
Yeah, we want to understand better, because as we went through budget season, we found ourselves having to guess about what some of these expenditures were, and that's where the. And that's where the idea was germinated that why don't we get ahead of the curve and have the fire department um? And there'll be others, the library, et cetera, come in and and tell us about their financial picture so that. We'll know, we'll each be able to know where we stand on what kind of an allocation they should get next year. So since the fire department did volunteer, our commission, um. We could ask them to come to us at the October meeting.
If we want to do with that early, I I sort of was thinking more about, you know, in. In the calendar year two thousand twenty five, but there's no reason why they can't come in earlier, because we're talking about. A general construct of what they're doing, not.
Right, I just think if we wait until the beginning of the next year, we're going to run out of time.
Yeah, we're gonna run out of time. We need to do this.
Uh, I I remember the people from the fire commission were were very happy and willing to come. So if we can ask them to come. At our October meeting, um, that would be our inaugural.
So we can't make a motion to ask them to come to the September meeting and start there because we already know they're willing to do that. So why wait till October?
We got, we've got a lot of business in the September meeting, because we tabled a whole.
Oh, that's true. That's true too. Okay, yeah, yeah.
They'll be fine. That's what I would propose.
Cause she was asking if we needed a motion for it.
No, I didn't ever know if we needed a motion. Add it, but we don't.
Well, we'll just put it on the agenda for October.
We'll have our people call your people. Okay.
Great, thanks.
Chair's been to chair's.
Oh, ready to motion?
Nope, we no, we don't. We're up to D.
Same and can discussion. This is a sticky one. Uh, I assume you're all aware of situation with Water Town and the settlement with Canyon King. And the name two uh over allegations is violating accounting standards between apprentice towns on its. Um, any thoughts on this?
I I I think I would tend to defer to John a little bit on this, but I do want to point out two things. Um, at first glance, the violation doesn't seem very, very serious. But my my other point, and Steve would probably know this as well, is that. We have put our out RFPs for um uh audits. Uh, you know, for quotes on audits and have not successfully gotten anyone else to bid. Is perhaps it's because of our old system though. And so the next time. We have that opportunity after this contract's done. Um, I think this is the last year of the contract. Um, this audit, we have to put our an RFP anyway. And with the new system in place, we may be in a better position to attract other firms. Who won't shy away from that antiquated uh s- system uh to bid, but I'm just guessing. Maybe. Okay, well, I don't know why we weren't getting any other bids. I just, that's the only thing I can think of. Anyway, that's all I had to say.
Is is it the case this is their last year with us?
It's the last year. When we do an RFP, that's a three year contract.
Okay.
And this is our third year of the three year. Uh, Judy has some course. Do you want to share?
We're sharing a conversation. It's okay.
I know, just.
It's not that I want to share with you, just.
Okay, I just didn't want you to miss this.
I will. For Judy, this is from Debbie Franklin. Uh, sorry, can I? She says, I wanted to follow up regarding our discussion on Monday. This was addressed to Dave. First of all, if there's any concern over the recent newspaper articles pertaining to our relationship with Watertown. I would encourage you or the Board of Finance members to contact their town town manager, Mark Raymo directly. His phone number is eight six oh nine four five five two five five and his email address is. Raymo's, R A I M O at Watertown dot org. Secondly, several conversations on Monday centered around the non-lapsing Board of Fund and Chris King is reaching out to. Patent Care directly. So there is contact there if you want to speak to Watertown. What happened?
That letter sent to the.
Yes.
King and King has worked for the town of Falls Village for several several years. This is the first I've ever heard. He says it was.
Uh, it's from what I can tell, it's a minor.
That was my first thought to.
But maybe it would be good for us to talk to Mark Raymo. I mean, I'd be willing to call him if you wanted or contact him. And report back if you'd like. Um, again, I always think it's very healthy for us to do an RFP. You know, when the time is right, which is. I think we should probably put an RFP out, you know, sooner than later, perhaps. Um, we can look at the old one. Um, because we want to have time to really review these kinds of things. And it would be wonderful to have, you know, a choice. We didn't really have a choice the last couple of times.
Okay, what point does the RFPs allow and have to be accepted by?
I'm not sure, but uh, um, I can check.
I know that I had to report to the state who our auditor is for this fiscal year. Couple months ago, so.
With one law, you're on their contract too.
Isn't this the last?
Yes. So there's two more audits.
Amy, what did you mean when you said you didn't felt feel like you had a choice in the past?
Oh, we we only had one RFP response.
True, you mentioned, uh, non-hatchet. Born of education.
Yes, I don't know what.
It's not the same issue that we had.
That we already. I have known.
Conversation, it was it was what Pat brought up to you guys that you were not seeing about. Um, the unexpended funds we need to go into. And it was just conversation about how that account is held. Who had to pay for it, whether he himself would tell or uh Cindy with the with the school. It was nothing. It was just how that.
It was just follow up on the on what had.
Yeah, then it was turned into that um, but school opened it themselves, um. Like, I think they have a couple other stuff, I think, so.
Yeah, it.
Was a signature at the wrong signature.
Applications violating the bottom stairs.
What was the punishment?
I'm looking.
Oh, okay, I thought that was new.
But uh, John did send us the email, all of us.
It's signed off by Waters Reports before the day's town's legal representation. Letters to the fur.
And they.
Of uh generally accepted accounting standards. Sounds a little more.
Well, I I don't think it's just they did something before the date they were supposed to. They did something before they had the information that they should have as auditors. So I I don't think a punishment of the one they got would would be the result of a footfall.
It says here that they were fined fifteen hundred dollars. I'm I'm sorry, I just. What's important is the our words government entities will be monitored by the state board for one year. And the next case, the audits they did have to be sent to the state before they can be released. From my experience, that's not a minor. Yeah, the dollar figure is.
Interesting. And is that is that over one year, the those eight double checks?
It's twenty one to twenty twenty two town audits.
Okay.
What do you, John, what the information, um. Three of the town teams, George Zimmerman, Cornwall has their own auditor, um. The other rest are we, us and Mark Canyon are the only ones left that is. Canyon King, Salisbury, they just left, moved to city. But they're auditing statewide, right? So they. Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I'll, uh, whatever I find out, I'll share.
Do you have any further action on that? All right, the next item, and it was with a great deal of the glad. Uh, me to get out my resignation from the board and general. Uh, let me just say that I have a number of, I have a number of medical issues. And although I'm fine, they require, you know, more management intensive than I had originally planned on. And it's uh, it's absorbing an awful lot of my time and energy right now. Makes it a little more difficult to uh participate the way I would like to with the board. But I appreciate my time here and I appreciate working with all of.
Um, we appreciate it too. Um, it, can you tell us how long is it? Is it, when is it effective?
I I I think it should be effective immediately.
After this meeting?
Yes.
Um, okay.
In which case, you'll need to schedule a special meeting to fill a vacancy. Uh, uh, from one of the alternate and election.
Through the term November, I think it ends.
Yeah.
Can I ask why we need a special meeting for that?
I'm sorry.
Can we ask why we need a special meeting to elect?
It's required by law. Statute.
Um, well, it is.
I'll 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 move that we accept with deeper regret and appreciation all those services that you have given to us. That it to our personal knowledge too. So we need a motion. All in. All are in favor?
Yeah, yeah, thanks very much.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Uh, any other business?
You're not.
Wait for the meeting to adjourn. What's that to me?
Okay, I'm here. Thank you. So, um, any uh, anyone have want to throw out a date? Do you want to try for next Monday? The nineteenth, or is that, are there other meetings happening on the nineteenth?
Could people be open to try? I'm going to be gone for an extended period starting next Monday, um. So, that means you shouldn't proceed, but um, what about, what about doing it later this week?
It's fine.
You only just, you just have the two items on the agenda.
Right. Do you want to try for third Thursday? Um, the fifteenth?
I'm in the dentist's chest, Dave. How about, how about the fourteen?
So Wednesday.
Anything works for me. So whatever you guys decide.
I'm clear, Wednesday. For me.
It's good or no?
Wednesday's good for Carol.
But Wednesday. What about, and what about you, Ginger?
I I'm out of town. I'm actually, I would be remote via Zoom.
As long as you're remote.
Yep. Right, but time. I mean, can we do it at five?
Can we do it another place? Now, could we do it in another location so we don't conflict?
So do you have if you have a Zoom, you need Zoom. We only have one Zoom at a time.
Okay, so Wednesday is not.
What time is the recommendation meeting? Can't we meet at six thirty?
Two items.
Right, so could we do that in a half an hour?
Absolutely. I don't think it would take a long time.
So why not six thirty Wednesday?
When do you set the date for the town meeting? We need to do that too.
Yeah, we haven't finished our agenda. We haven't gotten all the all the pieces done yet for that.
So uh, Wednesday is six thirty?
Wednesday's.
Yeah, well, me, I do.
If you want to give us a little extra time, make it six, just in case we take a little more time than we think.
Fine, okay, doesn't matter. I'm fine.
How's that for you, Ginger? Six on Wednesday?
I will do my best.
And Carl?
That should work. Is that enough time, Denise?
I'm sorry.
Is that enough time?
To notice? Special meeting?
Okay.
Um, but before you guys leave, you can sit on the chair and it's specific as to what's on the agenda.
Oh, that's right.
Two items would be on the agenda. I think one would be to uh elect a member to replace Dave.
Right.
And then after that, the election of the chair.
Right, those two items.
That's all.
Okay, so six P M on Wednesday, the fourteenth.
Um, I have another question though. If we are, I'm going to, um. Like to an alternate to fill a position, do we also need to appoint another alternate? So like, if let's say we put one of these two.
There's nothing to do with Boris Selkman.
I don't know, that's what I'm asking. So we can, we can go out to the public and say, hey, do you want to?
Just like we did with you. Steve recommended you. As an alternate to me.
Or select one.
No, no, I don't think we do. That's what I'm saying. So that should be on the agenda to appoint an alternate.
We may have to have a little more time to recruit.
It de- it depends on who, what what's the result.
If you can't do it.
It depends on what the result of.
Yeah, you have to have a special meeting to appoint.
Yes, but girl, you could, if the, if your next regular meeting, you could adjourn. You have a special meeting.
Okay, well, thanks, Denise. That's where.
Six o'clock right here on Wednesday.
Uh, at the town hall or view.
Town Hall.
And Zoom?
And Zoom. Now we have a G, the one of several confirmations. When you're ready. Oh, a motion, a motion. I'll make a motion to have our special meeting at six o'clock on Wednesday, August fourteenth. For the purpose of um, uh, appointing a a replacement for a new member. To replace David and then to uh vote on a chair. At the town hall.
So good.
You just have to say all. Okay. And then we have this.
Do these have to be read separately or can we combine them?
They are separate agenda items. So, um, I'd like to make a motion to consider recommending to town meeting appropriation of up to thirty thousand dollars. For the purpose of repairing the roof at one oh seven Main Street based on the estimate provided by Val Rest- Restoration. The funds are to come out of the one oh seven slash one oh eight property reserve account, number one, seven, zero, two, six, three, zero, five, four, one. Okay. Uh, Tom seconded.
Any discussion?
I have, I have a question on this. Are we replacing the roof, the whole roof or repairing? I have I have a question on this. Are we replacing the roof, the whole roof, or repairing the roof?
Repair and it goes to town meeting.
But it's a repair.
Thirty thousand.
I don't think you've got my place that for thirty thousand.
No, that's what I'm just saying. Yeah, I'm just. Concerned that we have right turn on one time. What's that?
The estimate. Well, we were twenty seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
And then had your uh oh.
What's that?
Your uh oh portion.
Well, well, there's a. Uh any shooting or placement will be determined.
Right.
Time material. Has been on top of the hundred and five dollars in the morning. Also, so they certainly. I didn't want to set. The one of one seven two fifty.
Right, right.
Thirty dollars.
So one of the things that, and I'm just anticipating the town meeting, is there any way that can be. Broken down as to what needs to be done, because there are going to be people at the town meeting that are going to ask, well, I just. So that that it can be presented at the town meeting, so they know exactly what's gonna be done, because I'm telling you right now, it's gonna come up.
We don't have to justify it, right? You know, it's.
No, I'm just making that suggestion to the selectmen that are here. Just make sure you have something to hand out. Yeah, because. You're gonna get that question.
To uh it sound like we're. In lightening level in March. Uh red area or snow and and then a rainfall and we we can see west.
Oh, yeah, you can see.
But especially if you go in that.
Yeah, I'm not I'm not disputing that it has to be done. I'm just saying, come to the town meeting, you are going to have people are gonna want to have that in front of. You know, okay.
So uh motions on the total.
Discussion still on the point. Chris, do you feel like you have enough leeway with that twenty seven and change plus the thirty?
I think so, I mean. You know, we tear tear the old section off and shoot it while we're in a round of charges on.
Sure. Uh you feel like that that cushion's good enough, right? Okay.
And we also need a motion.
Yeah, we gotta make this.
Motion from before you meet on.
So. All in favor?
All in favor?
Okay, then the next one is someone else wanna do this one?
Excuse me, cardinal engineer.
Okay. I'll make a motion to consider recommending to town meeting the appropriation of up to twelve thousand dollars for the purpose of evaluating the six bridges. In town that are less than twenty feet long for repairs, lifeline and maintenance, based on the estimate provided by cardinal engineering. The funds are to come out of the bridge res- reserve account. Uh hashtag one, seven, O dash two, six, four, six, six, eight, nine.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Yes, and discussion, yes.
Uh just curious, the six bridges were just.
I got it.
Yes, that was something.
We have Undermountain Road over Ledgy Brook.
Okay, hold on, Undermountain Road. Well, I think you can just. Make a copy of that for me if you was.
Anyway, go on. What's that? Undermountain Road over Demming Brook. Now you gotta drive Undermountain Road and look at all those signs. Barnes Road over Wondem Brook. Cane Mountain Road over Wondem Brook. Okay. Cane Mountain Road over Street.
That's between uh. The center of something British and Quan.
All right, yeah, yeah, I think we discussed that. What was the last? Oh, okay. And the last one is Music Mountain Road over Flat Rock. Over Flat Rock, yes.
Uh last question for me. Um what is the, it says here for repairs, lifeline and maintenance. What's lifeline mean? Lifeline? Says twenty feet long for repairs, lifeline and maintenance. I don't know, I I don't know what lifeline ma- means in con- in context here. The the length of life?
Yes.
All the the life life.
Life expectancy, I guess.
That would be.
That would make sense.
Yeah.
Oh.
You have to ask for all.
More in favor?
Hi.
Hi. So this mean we have four. Incorporations being for the town at this point, one from the last month view and these three today. Wasn't there one that girl made?
And she'd been made. I mean, June.
Oh, well, yeah, June, sorry, June.
So we had.
Where's that? Oh, we have the right? Got it, thank you.
So there are three.
Breathe in, right?
Uh any other business? Come before me, yeah. The board's in it. Any other public comments? Okay. Love, appreciate it. I appreciate them. All right, I have a motion.
You got them, right? You did?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Thank you, Alan. Lines that need to be adjusted to the.
Okay, so. Shall we give it a try? Oh, gosh. We have to, so they can close out the books. We have to, we we have to reallocate. Funds.
So what, so if it's not line items have overage and solid.
I know. So can I make a suggestion? Um it's it's I I don't, it's it's usually not so many outlines, but. We're gonna try one out first of this. Um I moved to. To transfer from. Transfer station line six, zero, zero, one. Uh four hundred and seventy five dollars for the Board of Assessors line one oh five and the Board of Assessment Appeals one oh six. Expenses that were over those amounts. No, I don't know how to word it.
I don't think we can do this right now.
I think they need us to, so they can close the books.
That'd be recognized, Dave?
Dave, you're still.
I moved the table this.
Yeah.
We don't have the June thirty report, but you need to make sense of all these changes. There there was some significant spending. Um in the last month, and I didn't get a chance to look at it.
No, I just sustain now. Yeah, I don't think it's a move I'm making.
Or until we do, yeah.
Okay, so you'll you'll present the June report the next meeting.
But I can't.
So we'll, I guess we'll have to wait for the June report, but I'm not ready to do this.
Okay, do we wanna?
Yeah.
Would we?
We have to wait, I think we have to.
Do we wanna do it at our special meeting Wednesday?
We only have an hour before we have to.
Yeah, but these are like not things for like deep de- deliberative discussion, they're just.
Well, I don't know about that, because as I said, there was some significant spending in June, and I'd like to know why it happened, what it's all about. Um so I wouldn't, I I don't think it's a good idea to put it on for the gentleman, especially.
Wanna understand a little bit more, if you don't mind, but these these have already been spent.
Yes.
Right. And they you have to have some revenue to cover the expense, and it's not there right now, so. What would you do differently? If you had to report, I just wanna understand that.
I want all the information so I can make sense of all of it. If I don't have the June thirty report, these are expenditures uh for the month. Um there were some expenditures, some big ones during the month of June, just a lot of questions that. I would like to have some time to look at at the those numbers, and if I can't have the June report. Because of the chicken and egg thing, that's okay, but I would like to have some time to look at these things. I mean, we can't act on stuff that we get three hours before the meeting.
And this is the same as Tom wanting to get information on it. So I think that this is a little more important, um not saying that we're not gonna do it, but I think that I haven't looked at this.
And it's very, it's more than it usually is, I must say.
That's that's, you know.
Ask questions. So if we delay a month, what does that do to you?
To me?
Well, to the to the treasurer's work.
My only thing is, King and King is comes from most of those six and these, they're asking for the. Forty now, I don't know about that. I'm just telling you that.
So King, King's in public office, and we're not gonna do this again until September, then again, we have more problems, which is built. I understand your point. I totally get it, I get.
Yeah, and they're usually only three or four, right?
Yeah, some of these numbers are.
Significant.
So I just think, so we'll put King and King off.
So my perspective is more aligned than Amy's. I believe that the money's already been spent. I think the information could be gained after we reallocate funds to make sure that we can balance the June. I understand John's point and want to even know why, however, the why is not gonna help us. So is it out? It's already done, so just moving money around to to cover it. Can be done without, and then a se- a separate exercise can be to determine the whys. So I agree with John, I just feel like we could move a little quicker than waiting a month.
Like maybe doing it Wednesday.
If I think we can have the time to do it Wednesday, because she said she better run to the report, met John's okay for that one. Of what he's looking for.
Well, I'm basing it on what uh Tom and I are saying, which is the why can be examined. Later when we have the report, but the money's already been spent. And I I'd be willing to put a proposal on the allocations together so that we can do it succinctly on Wednesday.
Yeah, knowing. Knowing why is not gonna undo the expenses.
It's done, yeah.
So all we're doing is trying to balance things out. So we put off multiple organizations if we wait. Just understand why. I I I get it, while with the board, you can touch to the board here, but. Well, I feel like it's a delay.
It's time Wednesday afternoon, I that I can show you the expense report from all the. Everybody is able to comment right this way, fair.
Well, I I'm fine with uh starting the special meeting at say five. Take care of this, and then we can get to the other two agenda items.
Oh, that's good, looks for me too. I I I can.
Was it five P M, John? Uh I got, make it work, I believe.
And uh Ginger?
That's gonna be tough. I I that's gonna be tough, unfortunately.
You can come in when you're able.
I can join when I'm able, yes. But I know we'd be at five. Do we have to? Um is there an order to doing this? Can we do this prior to?
Yes, I'd advise it since Ginger won't be available.
That's what I mean, so yeah, that's my concern.
So the agenda would be, we'd like to add, we'd like to do. So should we change the time of our special meeting, please, to five? Is that what people are comfortable with? And that we add to the agenda? The what what do you call this? Uh department budget balancing, reallocations and transfers? Reallocations. And that would be the first item on the agenda?
My proposals also been made to start at five.
Five thirty, just a half an hour, I think that.
Okay, amended at five thirty. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Five thirty.
Oh, we still, we have uh any more public?
Yeah, second.
Okay, well, we had we had um Greg made a public comment.
I have one. Well, Denise. For the last two, maybe three years. The June during its treasury report was presented in August. Remind, I mean, so if you're looking at that, have a deficit show as a deficit, the one of her over shows. Because reduce the report. You just show the what's over and what's under, and then if you make your allocation. But on expenditure report, it also shows exactly what's spent in the month of June. So you can produce the report, at least you put in the year back, last two or three. And then you can make the allocations. So I know we can't close out, but you can produce the report.
And that's what she said, she was gonna do what I said.
I said, I think it's true, that is. But I can't produce the projection then the first phase, right?
Great, that'll be helpful.
But it's not, and and it's doing thirty, the way that I understood, wasn't plus the projection anymore, so that's great.
Was, it was in years past, it's better projection, because if you look at the June thirtieth ones that really did. It's a little off from what the auditors did, because it's. The audience happy to mediate.
Right.
And it's not fully balanced, but you can still produce a treasure report as a June thirtieth.
I I I mean, I roll my ones, I'm directing the meetings.
What what is it on the face of the treasurer's report that would be influenced by?
Usually it's not like the projected general funds, it's more of an accurate, not a direct, that's where I can. Yes. Uh so I can produce the expense report, I can totally produce that, I just can't produce all of this on the front. Because it's not closed out. So here, so my extended. Be a little bit different once you guys see your allocation, it's I can review, instead of having projected general funds. As a June thirtieth, it would be the actual. So yes, I can give you the expense report, that's no problem.
Right, just saying, thinking, we got it for two weeks.
Yep, and the other kind of.
Can I add a motion to adjourn?
So moving. So nice.
All in favor?
I.
Oh, you're welcome. It's good thing you returned that, Stephen.